Good morning, welcome to today's Past, Present and Future of SNAP Hearing on Breaking the Cycle. I'd like to welcome you here this morning. I'm so appreciative for all of our presenters who have come, for our members as well. Thank you for coming to the Nutrition Subcommittee, and thank you for making time on your schedules to be here. This is the latest hearing in our series, The Past, Present and Future of SNAP. Today we're examining how to break the cycle of poverty. This hearing was inspired by a visit I made last year to Concord High School in Elkhart, Indiana, in my district. I'm sure my colleagues here are very familiar how these visits typically go. You answer questions from the brightest students gathered in the auditorium or the classroom, and they ask questions like, "How does a bill become law?" "What's it like to be in Congress?" "What's your position on such and such an issue?" However, one student's question that day caught me off guard, and it was a young woman who stood up in that class and said, "How do I break the cycle of poverty?" And I'll never forget this, as long as I live. The student stood up in front of her peers and bravely told her story that day of her family receiving SNAP. While in high school, she got a job to start saving for college because she recognized the value of a college degree. She's trying to break the cycle of poverty, trying to do the right thing as a young woman, yet feels intense pressure on all sides to maintain the status quo. She wanted to know, "How can she, as a young woman, break the cycle of poverty?" That day will resonate with me forever, and that's why we're here today. In our past hearings, we've examined the conditions necessary to help adults climb the economic ladder, and the way community organizations serve as vital conduits and bridges to other support services. But what about adolescents and kids? Studies have shown that children who grow up in impoverished conditions are more likely to have lower academic achievement, and more likely to live in poverty as adults. How do we give today's youth an off-ramp from this? SNAP is only one piece in the social safety net puzzle for families, so we have to recognize that this one program can't do it all. As we saw in a previous hearing, sometimes that puzzle can inadvertently create disincentives to work. The welfare cliff, for example, forces recipients to consider foregoing raises or promotions, or work altogether, because the increase in earned income isn't enough to replace the loss of SNAP and other benefits. America is the land of opportunity, not the land of "we'll have to think about it." SNAP tries to help young people break the cycle of poverty by exempting formal college savings, like 529 plans, and income from full-time students under 18 from eligibility calculations. Are these effective? Is there more we can do to aid children to break the cycle of poverty? Today we'll hear from witnesses who can attest to the impact poverty has on children, the challenges they face as they transition into adulthood, and ways we can help them increase their chance of success. I thank each of our witnesses today so much for being here, and I would like to take a moment to introduce one witness here today from my district, Ruth Riley. Ms. Riley played for the University of Notre Dame and was a member of the 2001 National Championship Women's Team, won a WNBA championship with the Detroit Shock, and a gold medal with the U.S. Olympic Team in 2004. Before she won championships on the basketball court, Ruth was raised in a single-parent household that relied on food stamps and free and reduced lunches. In 2012, Ruth became an ambassador for Share Our Strength, a nonprofit organization committed to ending childhood hunger, as part of their No Kid Hungry campaign. Thank you, Ms. Riley, so much for being here today. I'd now like to recognize Ranking Member McGovern for his opening statement.
Well, thank you very much, and I want to thank the witnesses for being here. I think this is an important hearing. And let me just begin by saying that I agree with our chairwoman that SNAP can't do it all. But what it is supposed to do, which is to make sure that people don't go hungry in this country, I think it needs to do it better. And if we're going to break the cycle of poverty, quite frankly, it's going to require a hearing with more than just the Agriculture Committee, because a lot of our anti-poverty programs, a lot of the issues that happen when people hit this so-called cliff, fall under the jurisdiction of multiple committees. And one of the things that I have been urging, unfortunately unsuccessfully thus far, the White House to do, is to host a conference, a White House conference on food, nutrition, and hunger, because there are a lot of good things happening all across the country in combating hunger. And I think what we need is a clearinghouse to be able to highlight best practices, but we also need to talk very candidly about ways that we can sew up some of the holes in the social safety net to make sure that people don't fall through the cracks, so that we are helping people move beyond SNAP and hopefully breaking the cycle of poverty. You know, we've had multiple hearings in this committee. We've had seven hearings, to be exact. We've heard a lot about SNAP. We've talked about comprehensive case management models and innovative public-private partnerships. Look, and I'm all for strengthening SNAP's job training program, but the real problem is that we don't have enough slots available to meet the need for workers looking to improve their skills. So bolstering our job training programs is expensive. I support it, but it's expensive. And we want to have much more robust case management. That's going to cost more as well. I'm all for that. I think that's an important way to help people, you know, break the cycle of poverty. But if we're going to do that, we need to make sure that the funding is there to do that. And what I am very strongly against is robbing Peter to pay Paul. I don't think we should lessen our commitment to food and nutrition programs and divert those monies to someplace else, because quite frankly, in my view, based on my experience, the SNAP benefit as it is currently constructed is inadequate for families. Go to any food bank in this country, and at the end of the month, people are lined up because they've run out of their SNAP benefit. And by the way, the SNAP benefit that is available for people today is less than it was a few years ago because of actions that this Congress has taken to cut the benefit. SNAP in and of itself is not a jobs program. It's a food program. That's why I'm especially pleased that Dr. Ochoa is here with us today, and that his testimony focuses on what the body of evidence says about SNAP's positive effect on children's health. We know that access to adequate nutritious food during childhood is key to healthy development and future economic productivity. We need to get this right. We need to do this better. So let me remind my colleagues that half of all SNAP recipients are children. And the last time I checked, children weren't expected to work unless we want to repeal the child labor laws. But the majority of people on this program are children, are senior citizens, are those who are disabled. Of those who work, the majority work, but they earn so little that they still qualify for SNAP. And so I look forward to the hearings today. And I think we need to figure out, you know, how we can do this better. But I worry that in this committee, sometimes we look at SNAP to, you know, to be the remedy for everything. This is a program to make sure people do not go hungry in this country. And the benefit is inadequate. We need to bring in other committees. We need to get the White House more engaged in this debate and in the challenges before us. So we need to figure this out, and I think we could probably find some bipartisan consensus on that. So with that, I yield back my time.
Thank you, Mr. McGovern. The Chair would request that other members submit their opening statements for the record, so the witness may begin testimony to ensure there is ample time for questions. The Chair also would like to notify members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority from members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival. I appreciate members' understanding. Witnesses are reminded to limit your oral arguments to five minutes. All of the written statements will be included in the record. I would now like to welcome the witnesses to the table. Carolyn Ratcliffe, Senior Fellow, Urban Institute, Washington, D.C. Thank you so much for being here. The aforementioned Ruth Riley, former WNBA athlete and Olympic gold medalist. Dr. Eduardo Ochoa, Jr., M.D., Little Rock, Arkansas, on behalf of Children's Health Watch. Thank you so much for being here. And Dr. Haskins, Senior Fellow, Brookings Institution, Washington, D.C. With that, Dr. Ratcliffe, please begin with your testimony when you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Subcommittee. My name is Caroline Ratcliffe, and I'm an economist and Senior Fellow at the Urban Institute. The Urban Institute does not take policy positions. The views I'm presenting today are my own. I will describe findings from my research on childhood poverty. This research is closely connected with this Subcommittee's work on SNAP, as poor children are substantially more likely to be food insecure than their non-poor counterparts. My research highlights obstacles poor children face in reaching milestones, such as completing high school, graduating from college, and maintaining consistent employment. This research helps us understand what it would take to break the cycle of poverty. This research is based on data that tracks families over 40 years, and follows children from birth throughout childhood and into adulthood. I will answer three questions. In answering these questions, I get at issues of economic mobility and how poverty and economic vulnerability cycles through to the next generation. The first question is, just how many children are we talking about when considering poverty? While roughly one in five children currently lives in poverty, nearly two in five children are poor for at least one year before they reach their 18th birthday. That means that roughly 29 million of today's children are expected to live below the poverty line before age 18. Further, one in 10 children is persistently poor, meaning they spend at least half of their childhood living in poverty. Importantly, persistently poor children do not enter poverty and stay there. Rather, they tend to cycle into and out of poverty. Moving to the second question, how does childhood poverty link with adult success? Children who have been poor for at least one year before age 18 are less likely to reach important adult milestones, such as graduating from high school, enrolling in and completing college, and maintaining consistent employment. Although 93% of children who were never poor complete high school by age 20, only 78% of children who have ever been poor do so. And when looking at the subset of children who are persistently poor, the disparity is even greater. As these poor children become adults with limited education, there are implications for their long-term economic well-being, as lower-educated groups have lower wages and higher unemployment rates. Overall, these data show that when these poor children enter adulthood and have their own children, poverty and economic vulnerability, as well as food security, will cycle through to the next generation, food insecurity. Moving to address the final question, among children who have experienced poverty, what are key indicators of their future success beyond poverty? There are three important dimensions. First is parents' educational attainment. Among children who have experienced poverty, children with less educated parents, particularly a parent with no high school degree, has lower educational achievement. This relationship persists even after taking account of the length of time children spend in poverty and other family and neighborhood characteristics. So it's not just poverty. Parents' education matters above and beyond poverty. The second is residential instability. Among children who have experienced poverty, children who move for negative reasons, such as an eviction or the family's need for lower rent, are worse off educationally than children who never move. Moves that happen for negative reasons can exacerbate already tenuous circumstances for children, particularly if the move results in the need to change schools during the school year. Third, place matters. Children who grow up in disadvantaged neighborhoods fare much worse. Among children who have been poor, children in more advantaged neighborhoods are substantially more likely to complete high school by age 20 than children from the most disadvantaged neighborhoods. In closing, these data show that childhood poverty and the cycle of poverty are complex issues. If we want to break the cycle of poverty and food insecurity, there should be close coordination across safety net programs. SNAP exists in the context of other programs and policies, so it would be beneficial to connect SNAP reforms with other anti-poverty programs, such as those that assist with savings and asset building, education and training, childcare, and other work supports. SNAP has taken important steps in this direction by making it easier for families to save in years when they have higher income without giving up future SNAP eligibility and down times. Savings and assets give people the tools to protect their families in tough times and invest in themselves and their children. Further reforms in this direction can help families create a more stable environment for children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ratcliffe. Ms. Riley, please proceed with your testimony.
Good morning, Chairman Wolorski, Ranking Member McGovern, and members of the committee. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to share my experience on the importance of Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or what my family called Food Stamps. This is an issue that is woven into the very fabric of my childhood. My father walked out when I was four years old. He left my mom to raise my older sister, younger brother, and myself on her own. She found herself doing whatever blue-collar work she could to provide for us, but it wasn't easy. Besides the rare instances that I would wake up in the middle of the night and find her crying at the kitchen table because she was trying to navigate through our family's finances, I was pretty oblivious, as most children are, to the level of poverty we lived in. I knew there were some times when my mom paid for our groceries, which looked like Monopoly money instead of cash. Off and on throughout my childhood, I'd have this little ticket that would get me a free breakfast or lunch at school. But as a kid, I had limited knowledge of food stamps or free and reduced lunch programs. I just knew that somehow, when we needed it, there was always food. Because I had this food, I was able to learn and focus in school, which ultimately led me to graduate with honors from the University of Notre Dame. It fueled my real passion, basketball. I'm grateful and proud of the success that I've had winning championships on the collegiate, professional, and Olympic levels. I often joke that when I was growing up, I was tall, lanky, and uncoordinated. But looking back, I can't imagine what my path would have been like if I was tall, lanky, uncoordinated, and hungry. When times were tough, the nutrition I received through programs like food stamps and school meals helped me grow stronger. It saw me through all the numerous hours of training before and after school, lifting with our football coaches, and playing pickup games with the boys. It was all very physically demanding, and I couldn't have done it if I didn't have enough to eat. We live in the land of wealth and opportunity, so acknowledging that one in five children in this country lives, and a family struggling to put food on the table is hard. It's easy to feel compassion about hungry children when it's in the abstract, but it's tough to admit that our next-door neighbor's child might not have enough food they need to thrive. I say "thrive" because in America, it's often not the case of life or death or survival. It's the fact that kids don't have the nutrition they need to learn and physically grow. By not providing them with that, as a society, we're also not providing them with the opportunity to be successful, to go to college, and to break the cycle of poverty instead of getting stuck in it. We talk about educational reform, but we don't talk about the fact that hungry kids can't concentrate and learn. We talk about healthcare, but we don't talk about the sun-to-development and avoidable health issues that rise from the lack of proper nutrition. We talk about jobs, but we overlook the impact of hunger-related issues on creating a job-ready generation. SNAP is critical to ending childhood hunger. I can tell you firsthand that when programs like SNAP work in tandem with other programs like school meals, we can make sure that kids are getting the three meals a day they need to grow strong. For example, school breakfast ensures that kids start their days with healthy meals to fuel their brains, while allowing their parents to stretch SNAP dollars longer into the month instead of running out early. This way, when the money is extremely tight, we can guarantee that kids are still getting the healthy food they need. My mom taught me to dream big, and then to work extremely hard to achieve those dreams. My dream as a little girl growing up on a farm in Indiana was to play in the Olympics, and I was fortunate to see that dream fulfilled in Athens in 2004, when I stood on the podium and received a gold medal. Today, my dream is equally as bold, and I believe achievable. I want to see a nation where no child goes hungry, a nation where every child has the ability to get the nutrition they need to grow up smart and strong, a nation where every little girl dreams to dream her dream, and gets the food and support she needs to grow up and achieve them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Dr. Ochoa, please proceed with your testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the committee, and good morning. My name is Dr. Eddie Ochoa, and I have the opportunity to give this testimony as a member of Children's Health Watch, a nonpartisan network of pediatricians, public health researchers, and children's health and policy experts committed to improving children's health in America. I'm a general pediatrician, and I practice at Arkansas Children's Hospital in Little Rock as a faculty member of the University of Arkansas for Medical Sciences. Little Rock is one of five sites in the Children's Health Watch Research Network, along with Baltimore, Boston, Minneapolis, and Philadelphia. Our mission is to improve the health and development of young children by informing policies that address and alleviate economic hardships. We do this by interviewing caregivers in emergency departments and clinics on the front lines of care in these five sites. We've interviewed 60,000 caregivers since 1998 to determine the impact of public policies on child health and development of real children. Justin is one such real child. Hospitalized twice in his first two years of life for poor growth, I saw him in my clinic. He lives in the Mississippi Delta region of Arkansas with his parents and two siblings. The family drove over an hour each way to come see me. Justin's father works at a sawmill, but his wages fluctuate. When he brings home less money in a month, the family is eligible for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, but with an uptick in his pay, they lose eligibility for SNAP and a crucial support for supporting Justin's and the whole family's health. The increased pay does not match the value of the SNAP benefit, and thus, Justin's health can fluctuate with his father's pay and his family's eligibility for SNAP. Speaking of health, intuitively, all of us in this room would probably guess that being hungry or food insecure is not good for a young child like Justin. In fact, there is a wealth of scientific evidence demonstrating the hazard that food insecurity poses to health across the whole lifespan, starting in pregnancy and early childhood. Adequate nutrients are required to support healthy development, but food insecurity can compromise it. The USDA estimates that nearly 20% of all U.S. households with children under six experienced food insecurity in 2014. six experienced food insecurity in 2014, reporting limited or uncertain availability of enough food for an active, healthy life. We know that household food insecurity increases the risk of developmental delays by approximately seventy percent in early childhood. More specifically, compared to food-secure children, food insecure children are twice as likely to be in fair or poor health and are thirty percent more likely to have been hospitalized after birth. We have strong solutions to this grave national problem. The furthest reaching of these is SNAP. It is truly a health intervention, helping to protect the health and well-being of those who participate in the program. For example, research has shown that SNAP lowers the risk of household and child food insecurity, reduces the risk of anemia, obesity, and poor health for children and adults, and lowers the risk of hospitalization for failure to thrive in reports of child abuse or neglect. Moreover, it enhances intake of B vitamins, iron, calcium, and improves children's academic performance. At Children's Health Watch, we call SNAP a vaccine because, like a vaccine, it protects children's health now and in the future, and also has wider community benefits. Our research on families with young children has shown that SNAP significantly reduces food insecurity for the whole family, and importantly, reduces food insecurity among children. Children whose families receive SNAP compared to those who were likely eligible but did not receive it were also significantly less likely to have developmental delays and less likely to be underweight for their age. Families as a whole also were better able to make ends meet when they participated in SNAP. Those who participated were less likely to have had to choose between paying for medical care and paying for other basic needs like food, housing, or utilities. But like a vaccine, it is essential to be able to apply SNAP in the proper dose and for the necessary course or length of time in order for it to have the maximal impact on children and families. If you'll allow me to make another child health connection here, food insecurity and hunger can be likened to a problem like asthma, which needs the right medicine when there's a breathing crisis and a different, long-term medicine to keep another crisis at bay. It is certainly true that asthma is a big problem in the U.S., but hunger in America is an even bigger problem, and it's not easy to know who is food insecure and who is not. I'll come back to that idea in a second. In order to manage asthma properly, so-called rescue medication is essential to deal with the immediate crisis, but this medicine is not enough as a long-term strategy. Food assistance for hungry children and families must be as robust on the long-term side via systemic programs such as School Meals, summer feeding, WIC, in addition to the cornerstone that SNAP is. It's also dependent on the emergency food assistance networks across America. As you might imagine, though it exists everywhere in the U.S., the severity of food insecurity differs by state, and rates can be very high in some states. Where I live in Arkansas, Children's Health Watch research, based on data from the caregivers in our emergency department, shows that nearly one in four families with a child under the age of four in the home is food insecure. This is against a backdrop of twenty-seven point seven percent of Arkansas households with children being food insecure and having the second-highest overall rate of food insecurity in America. We highlighted these findings in a report titled "Doctors' Orders" released this past spring. We also made note of the fact that food insecurity coexists with other household insecurities, as had previously been mentioned, like rent and utilities. I mentioned earlier that food insecurity is often not easy to spot. That's why we developed a shortened version of the eighteen-item USDA screener and validated what we call the Hunger Vital Sign. The Hunger Vital Sign emphasizes that, just like blood pressure or weight, which a nurse checks at every visit, we can use this as a marker of food insecurity in the home. And in fact, last week, the American Academy of Pediatrics released a statement promoting food security for all children that recommends the use of this Hunger Vital Sign by all pediatricians. I thank you again for the invitation to provide this testimony.
Thank you, Dr. Ochoa. We appreciate it. Dr. Haskins, you may proceed.
Chairman Wolorski and Ranking Member McGovern, members of the subcommittee, I'm very pleased to testify-
Excuse me, can you turn your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very pleased to testify today. It's a considered great privilege to be able to talk about poverty and the solutions to poverty to people who can actually do something about it. I'd like to do three things: talk about the progress we've made against poverty or the lack of it, and then I want to talk about the causes, and then I want to focus on work because I think it's something this subcommittee could do something about. So here are poverty rates for kids in female-headed families, for the elderly, and for all children. For the elderly, I think that's the pattern that we would all like to see, that there's a very substantial decline after the Declaration of the War on Poverty, and it has continued to decline slowly, and we have the lowest poverty rate of any group in societies among the elderly, and it's primarily because of Social Security. A lot of the elderly have savings, and it takes them way above the poverty line, but Social Security with hardly any supplements enough to keep the elderly out of poverty. The chart for single-parent families, the line graph for single-parent families, is much more difficult. They have the highest poverty rate, and they have the most rapidly growing demographic group in the country because of our divorce rates and especially our nonmarital birth rates. So we are taking kids out of the group, married couple families, who have a poverty rate about one-fifth of single-parent families, and putting them into single-parent families. That contributes greatly to poverty. And then, of course, the second reason that we have such high poverty rates is because of education. The gap in education, even though low-income families and especially black kids have increased their achievement over the years somewhat, not greatly, but somewhat, they still have suffered a greater gap with middle-class families, so we haven't closed the gap. And then the final cause, in addition to family composition, education, is work. Let me devote the rest of my testimony to work. We have had one case in which work made a big difference, and it occurred about the time of welfare reform. It was not just welfare reform, I don't want to claim that. It was a very good economy. We had very good programs, and I want to focus on those programs. I call them the Work Support Programs. Congress passed twenty, thirty pieces of legislation to change these programs so that they would be friendlier to work and address the cliff problem and so forth.
Pardon me, Dr. Haskins, for one second. I apologize. To the members that are here, you received his PowerPoint, it's right here, that he's talking about. We're not seeing it on the screen, but you do have it in front of you. Thanks, go ahead, Dr. Haskins.
Okay. Do I get my ten seconds back?
Absolutely.
Oh, good, thank you. All right, so this chart shows, other than Social Security for the elderly, the best strategy we have found to reduce poverty. So what we did, if you look approximately in the middle of the chart, roughly around the mid-nineties, is that we dramatically reduced poverty among kids in female-headed families. And the reason we did that is in part because of welfare reform. It required work, and the mothers went to work, there was about a forty percent increase in percentage of mothers, especially never-married mothers, who are the most disadvantaged, who got jobs. But then the second part of the equation is that this work-support system that I've been talking about, and that Congress expanded on several occasions over the past thirty-five, even forty years, earned income tax credit, additional child tax credit, and so forth, and you can see by the subsequent lines that each of them, when you apply them to the family, their poverty rate comes down and down and down and down. It cuts it by more than forty percent. So these government programs really make a big difference. I do not challenge the idea that Food Stamps is primarily for food, but it also makes a great contribution to increase the incentive to work in addition to serving its Food Stamp, its nutrition benefits. So now let me just say one thing about what I think this committee could do. The focus of welfare reform was not in education and training, it was in work. So states developed great skills, and people who could do it helped people find jobs, do a resume. Some states even helped people dress better, they practiced interviews and all that. And as I said, the mothers went to work and drove, they got jobs, they made low wages, but with additional benefits, they were much better off, and their kids were too. In fact, the poverty rate among black children who are disproportionately in female-headed families and among all kids in female-headed families both reached their lowest rates ever. And today, even after two recessions, they're still lower than they were during the early nineteen nineties, so I think the system was pretty successful. So what this committee could do, you have wisely, with the Senate, created these ten demonstrations because Food Stamps does not have strong work requirements as welfare did in the so-called TANF program, Temporary Assistance for Needy Families. I think they need to be changed. There are lots of issues about how to change it, and I think you're going to learn a lot from these demonstrations. There are ten states that are trying to figure out how they can increase the work rate in Food Stamps. And keep in mind, look at this chart, every mom who goes to work, even in a low-wage job, has a great chance to get out of poverty. If she works close to full-time and has two or fewer kids, she will be out of poverty because of her work and because of the work-support benefits. Now I want to caution about something that happened in welfare reform that's still the case today, and that I think is a problem. And that is that there are a lot of moms, single moms, who have a hard time both working and marrying their children. And so as a result, we have a group at the bottom, most people call them disconnected mothers, who are probably worse off now than they were before. They could go on welfare and stay in welfare forever, they wouldn't be out of poverty, but they would be better off than if they didn't have income from either wages or from cash. So that's something to look out for. We want a system that's tough, that requires work, that sends a message that people have to work, and then we subsidize their income, but we don't want one that's so tough that mothers who cannot work successfully and have depression or a number of other problems we can talk about if you want to wind up without either cash income from a welfare program or in-kind, like Food Stamps, or from earnings.
Thank you, Dr. Haskins, I appreciate it. And thanks to all of you for your testimony. We're going to move to the question period now, and I want to just start out by saying, in my district, in South Bend, Indiana, we just started recently with a three-feeding program. We had breakfast, lunch in schools, now we're moving in some areas in my district to dinner as well. It's being done year-round in some of the school corporations, but as we talked about today, we want to move beyond just this issue of just feeding kids and saying they're going to be successful, and we want to see these kids succeed. We want to talk about the community partnerships and those kind of things that are available to make sure that kids actually have a chance to reach their American dream. To do that, as you've heard earlier, we're talking about holistic kind of looks that we've never done before, which I think we've made a real effort in this subcommittee to do that. So I want to direct my question to Ms. Riley. Looking back on your childhood and some of the stuff that you've already shared in your testimony, can you just kind of elaborate and tell us a little bit more about the support that SNAP and School Meals provided for you and your siblings, and that whole concept of being a younger person than an adolescent, and then as you got your way out? But you look back at those days as a child, what did it mean? How important was it?
Well, as a child, you are kind of oblivious a little bit. I mean, you realize that you're different than the other kids. You have a means to get the nutrition in a different way, whether it's the ticket that I used to get my meals. But I think that as I talked to my mom, once I became a spokesperson, I really started to understand the dynamic of our family and her need at that time and how essential this was. So my role as a spokesperson has been a sense of a gratitude, looking backward and understanding how impactful these programs were to my success, not realizing it maybe at the time, but now as an adult, realizing that they were absolutely essential to me being a healthy student and an athlete.
I appreciate it. And, Dr. Haskins, we heard at previous hearings, we needed evidence-based understanding of the how to address this issue holistically. In your opinion, have we moved the needle at all recently when it comes to poverty and economic mobility? Should we keep doing the same things, or do you believe it's a worthwhile reexamination to actually reexamine the situation and say, what else can we do?
Economic mobility is a much broader problem and will require a much broader solution, and I'm going to leave that aside. Poverty, I think we have made progress, yes. I've shown in the mid-nineties and even today, we have a lower poverty rate among female-headed families, and the committee should know that we're not going to make progress against poverty unless we address where it's most frequent, and that's among female-headed families. So this strategy of work and work support, something for both sides of the aisle, is really a good strategy. We need to expand it. We need more people on Food Stamps to have a job, even if it's a low-wage job, and we'd make even more progress against poverty. I think the charts that I've shown you show that that is the case.
I appreciate that as well. And then, Ms. Riley, just briefly back to you. In the time that you've been involved now as an advocate for the organization that you're with, do you see improvements in the lives of the kids through the organization that you're working for? Do you see, you know, any positive things happening? And granted, there's a long way to go, but have you seen strides being taken that have been effective in the area that you're looking at?
Yeah, absolutely. And I've been a spokesperson in all the cities that I've played in probably in the last few years, and so been able to see a different demographic aspect to that as well. But for kids to know that there is a provision there and to not have to worry about the essential foundation of what they need allows them to have hope for a better future, allows them to just kind of focus on what's before them, which is their school, which is their ability just to be kids.
I appreciate it. And then, Dr. Radcliffe, one follow-up question quickly. This issue with looking at the holistic person, can you just elaborate a little bit more on that? And that's one of the things in the committee we're actually looking at, is this issue of what else can we do?
Thank you. One of the issues, looking, when we look at children from birth and throughout their childhood, that one of the issues that we find is that parents' educational attainment is so important. So it's work of the parents, but also we should look for education and training programs and in coordination with childcare and other work supports to help people and parents provide better for their families and move up the economic ladder.
Thank you, and I appreciate it. And I want to recognize now Mr. McGovern for five minutes.
Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate all your testimony. And just for the record, Dr. Ochoa mentioned the American Academy of Pediatrics policy statement, which recommended that pediatricians screen all children for food insecurity, noting the negative health outcomes associated with child hunger. I think it's an important statement. I'd like to ask unanimous consent that we insert the AAP's policy statement into the record. Without objection, okay, all right.
I'm nodding my head.
Okay. And look, I know we're talking about the whole picture here, but we need to get all the little pieces correct if we're going to solve the big picture. And that means we need to make sure that SNAP works and provides a benefit that is adequate to feed children and to feed families. And I think it is important to note that the SNAP benefit was more generous in 2013 than it is today. Food prices continue to go up, and more and more families on SNAP end up at food banks. We have close to twenty million children in this country who are hungry and food insecure. I think every single person in this Congress should be ashamed of that fact. We're the richest country in the history of the planet, we have close to twenty million children in this country who don't have enough to eat, who end up at food banks, who end up at food pantries at the end of the month. And I think that that is something we need to fix. We want to get the nutrition part of this right, we need to make sure that the benefit is adequate. And, Dr. Haskins, I, you know, look, I appreciate all your talking about, you know, the importance of work, but let's understand one thing, work doesn't mean people get off of SNAP. And to work, they need to be able to work, and, you know, childhood development needs to become first because that is the most important, I think, issue that we're talking about here today. And we need to make work pay more. I mean, no one mentioned raising the minimum wage, but the fact of the matter is you've got people working, and they're still on SNAP. You know, Congress has cut not only money for SNAP, Congress has cut money for job training programs. And I think before we, you know, change anything, we ought to see what the results of the SNAP work pilots are, and then, you know, any kind of changes based on that. But, you know, Dr. Ochoa, in your testimony, you had, you know, you say you had data on what a higher SNAP dose means for the health and well-being of children in the form of the American Recovery monies that boosted SNAP that ran out in November of 2013. What does the evidence show? Because, look, I want to make sure we get this right, and I think it's important for people to understand that there are no quick fixes, and a lot of the fixes we're talking about in terms of job training, all that kind of stuff is going to cost more resources. But I want to make sure our kids right now, and this is what this committee has some jurisdiction over, are getting an adequate food benefit. Maybe you could respond to that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McGovern. As you mentioned, the SNAP benefit was more robust in 2013, and 2013 is when the Institute of Medicine issued its report saying that the SNAP benefit needed to go up. And so what we were able to see with our research in these five sites across the country was that when our boost was in effect, there were much less hospitalizations and less developmental delay, better health, better height for weight for the children that we interviewed in our clinics and emergency rooms. And after the rollback, when we reexamined the data, we found that families with young children were twenty-three percent more likely to be household food insecure and seventeen percent more likely to be child food insecure. So in the face of having the better benefit and the better outcomes, that reversed rather quickly. So it's a troubling scenario, if you will, that under a more robust benefit as it was, just a little change in that can really have disastrous outcomes on child health.
Look, I tell people all the time that hunger is essentially a political condition because I think we know what we need to do to solve it, but we, for whatever reason, don't muster the political will to do it. I'm not just talking about Congress, I mean, the White House as well needs to take stronger leadership. I go back to where I began, I think we ought to have a White House conference on food, nutrition, and hunger because I do think that that's the place where all these different ideas, which fall under the jurisdiction of multiple committees, can kind of come together, and we can figure out a roadmap to move forward. Because when you ask anybody, whether it's in the White House or here, what is the plan to end hunger in America? There really isn't a plan. I mean, we have programs to try to deal with hunger, but there is no plan, and we do need a roadmap. And I'm trying to find out where the forum is that we can kind of connect all the dots and pull these pieces together. I don't know if anyone has any ideas on, you know, if you want to endorse my idea of a White House conference on food, nutrition, and hunger, that's perfectly fine with me. But I do think that, I mean, if we're serious about this, the White House needs to be involved more directly on this matter. I think I'm out of time.
The chair now recognizes Mr. Crawford for five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the witnesses for being here, and particularly- And I want to thank the witnesses for being here and particularly welcome Dr. Ochoa from Arkansas Children's Hospital. I'm one of those families in Arkansas who has seen personally, up close and personal, the benefits of Arkansas Children's Hospital. It's a world-class institution and doing great work there, and I thank you for that. You mentioned some statistics in your testimony, Dr. Ochoa, about Arkansas in particular being second, I believe, second highest rate in the United States in terms of food insecurity. And I find that to be a little bit ironic, considering we're one of the most productive agricultural regions in the country, if not the world. And so I say that to say this, I mean, we tend to look at these problems a lot of times through the lens of our own district. But with the statistics that we have in East Arkansas, which is my district, in the Mississippi Delta, I think if we can get this issue right there, we can apply that anywhere and create a template to really effectively address this food insecurity issue. Let me ask, what specifically the Arkansas Children's Hospital is doing, the work you're doing in the region? How is, how are you tackling food insecurity in the Delta? And can you expound on the role of public-private partnerships to help assisting in those challenges?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Crawford. As I mentioned in my testimony, we issued a report in the spring called Doctors' Orders, and I have some copies of these reports here with me today. Because what we specifically tried to do at our institution was look at ways that we could help hungry families that were coming to us for care. I mentioned that we're the only pediatric hospital in the state, and so we interview people in our emergency room from all parts of the state. And we found that there was just as many people who were coming to emergency department who were food insecure, but interestingly enough, different from the other sites in our research network, more of our families were educated and had higher incomes. So even for people who had higher education and income levels, the rates of food insecurity, and particularly child food insecurity, were very high. So we started looking at things that we could do at Children's to help this situation. And we've gotten into partnerships with both the State Health Department and the State Department of Human Services, and private organizations like the Arkansas Hunger Relief Alliance and the Arkansas Food Bank. So we're doing a variety of things. One is that we're training our people in the hospital who are financial counselors to help people with their Medicaid and their SNAP applications at the same time. DHS helped us a great deal with that. Second, DHS helped us apply to be a site for the summer meals program, and now we've extended that to all-year-round meals. And since we started those meals a couple of years ago, we've given away more than 40,000 free lunches to kids that are on our campus. We ask no questions. They can have their siblings get a lunch, so we give these lunches out every day of the week. We also have partnered with the Health Department to have a WIC office on our campus. So now for one day a week, we have a WIC office on our campus that can do eligibility determinations and help people who are either getting discharged from the hospital or leaving our clinics. And I'm sure a lot of those kids who are leaving from our hospital beds are going back to your district, feeling better that they've gotten their WIC eligibility straightened out. And we've also partnered with the food, the emergency food networks, to have food available that we can give to families when they leave. So with the partnership with a local food pantry, our residents can ask screening questions about food insecurity and provide those bags of food to families. We are also, I'm going to open a clinic in about a year under the Children's Hospital umbrella in southwest Little Rock, where Latino and African-American children are predominantly living in the city. And we're going to bake all this in, if you will, to the way we designed the clinic, to do the hunger vital sign, to ask about food insecurity, and to have things ready to intervene when we find those.
Thank you. I know there's been a lot of mention about breaking the cycle of poverty. Madam Chair, you mentioned that as a question you received in a meeting in your district. Dr. Ochoa, based on your experience in the Delta, what do you think needs to be done to support children who want to break the cycle of poverty? How do we do it?
Well, there are a lot of complex interlocking needs, you know. Families don't just come with one issue. And when a child is sick, we see that there are a lot of things that are going on. It's not just about food. It's also about housing. It's also about income. We're working with other advocates in Arkansas to try to start a conversation about the EITC in Arkansas, which I think is very important. We have to think about other things, like childcare supports. I'm glad that Dr. Radcliffe mentioned that, because if you have more moms who are working at low-wage jobs, if you don't have the childcare to help that backstop, it's really not going to be very helpful for that mom. So there are a lot of interlocking needs that we need to address and think about the holistic view of the child, but also know that hunger really marks the brains and the bodies of our children.
Thank you. I yield back.
The Chair recognizes Ms. Adams for five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ranking Member McGovern, and thank you all for your testimony. North Carolina is currently approved by USDA to receive a waiver from work requirements for able-bodied adults in the areas of the state that continue to experience high levels of unemployment for fiscal year 2016. The waiver allows able-bodied adults to receive SNAP benefits for more than three months during a three-year period if they cannot find a job during an economic crisis. Recently, the North Carolina General Assembly passed House Bill 318, and it prohibits the state from ever applying for a waiver for SNAP work requirements for able-bodied adults during an economic crisis, and that any waivers currently requested shall not extend past March of 2016. The bill, in my opinion, is mean-spirited. It punishes people in high-unemployment areas. And in my district, we've got a 13.8% unemployment. And of course, this limits the state's ability to meet the needs of the unemployment. As has been said here, SNAP is not a work program. It's a nutrition program to help those who are struggling to put food on the table. Last month, I sent a letter to our governor asking that he veto this bill, and we're still waiting. But I continue to call on our governor to do this, which he must do by the end of this week to keep the bill from becoming law. Mr. Haskins, if there are not enough jobs to go around for every able-bodied adult with out dependents in North Carolina, what is the value of increasing work requirements for SNAP recipients?
Whether there are jobs available or not is a complex question, because even during a recession when unemployment rates are high, people get jobs every day. There's a lot of circulation in the economy, so there are jobs available even during a recession. That means that some people are going to be out of work if there are no jobs available, so they have to look into adjoining counties and so forth. I think it is reasonable to have some adjustment during a recession in federal work requirements. I'm not sure I would suspend them, but I would give people a longer time to find jobs, for example, would be a reasonable approach. It's not unreasonable to suspend them, but I think that that defeats the policy in the first place. There needs to be continuing pressure. People getting public benefits need to know that they have to work as much as possible, and the government will make exceptions when it seems appropriate to do so, namely during recessions or high unemployment rates like you're talking about.
Right. Thank you, sir. I think there are lots of things that prohibit that. I mean, transportation, gaps, in terms of skills gaps and the jobs that are available. Mr. Ochoa, how might SNAP be of particular benefit to young children who also experience the stress of living in poverty?
Yes, thank you. That's an excellent question. I think that benefit starts in the womb. So when moms are pregnant and they're on SNAP, our research shows that the children that are born to those moms do better. They do better developmentally. They have better birth weights. They're in the hospital less often. And so we not only see the benefit from SNAP beginning prior to birth, but then we see the benefits all through childhood. You know, a program like WIC is great, but WIC is part of the overall fabric of food support that these families need in poverty. So the SNAP benefit that impacts not just the child, but the whole household, is really important. And as I mentioned earlier, it lasts all through early childhood, when brain formation is really at its critical point, and continues all through school and workforce.
Thank you. How might the investment in SNAP save money in healthcare costs in the long run, just as other vaccines do?
Well, our research shows that when children have an appropriate SNAP benefit and they're not in child food insecure households, they do better. So that we know there are less hospitalizations, there's less developmental delay. The developmental delays that I see in my clinics cost the system money, because we're trying to catch those kids back up. It decreases the rate of preterm births. There's just a whole host of scientific evidence that shows that SNAP is really a health benefit.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you're back.
The Chair recognizes Mr. Yoho for five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here. Ms. Riley, let me start with you. What led to your success? I mean, was it an internal desire to become great at what you do? Was it the physical attributes? Was it mentors around you that inspired you, that led you into that? Or was it a government program?
All of the above.
All of the above. You know, and I agree with that. You were going to say something else?
I would just, without any of the contributing factors, my mom, mentors, teachers, the program, I couldn't have been able to accomplish what I did.
All right. Is there one that was greater than the other? Loving, nurturing mother that gave you the can-do attitude?
I mean, I think without food, it wouldn't have mattered how great my mom was.
Oh, absolutely. None of us would be here without it. You know, there's a lot of us that have stories like you. We've seen people throughout history have that. This committee has heard my story too many times to repeat it, other than when my wife and I were married. We were picking up soda bottles to get by, because there were no jobs. It was during the '70s. The point is, and Dr. Ochoa, you brought up hungry kids, low-performance, food insecurity. You know, we know all these things. We know about the prenatal vitamin supplements and all those things that are necessary to have and birth a healthy child. We know all those. We can do those studies over and over again. Those are the facts. I mean, that's just science, and it's important to have those. Dr. Haskins, you brought out, you know, the single-parent households have the highest level of poverty and the highest level of food insecurity. And I agree. And we know, I mean, these are all facts that we know. To me, we're treating a symptom and not treating the underlying problem. The underlying problem, to me, is responsibility in a lot of this case, not all these. You know, because if we talk about the elderly or the disadvantaged, the people that can't work, that's a whole different category. But for the able-bodied person to raise children in the 21st century in America and not be responsible for that child, and I'm a veterinarian by trade, and if we have somebody that doesn't take care of an animal, the county steps in. And they will educate them, sometimes find them, sometimes take that animal away. And I said this in a meeting, actually, with my priest, and he says, "So you want to treat children like people, or you want to treat children like animals?" I said, "No." But do we treat our animals better than we do our children? You know, and to go along Mr. McGovern's case here, the plan to end hungry hunger in America, I think that's a noble cause. But I think we need to look at, you know, the underlying cause. Why are parents having children, multiple children, if they can't have the responsibility to take care of them? Is there any penalty for not taking care of a child? Does anybody want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, there certainly is. We have a very active child protection system, and they intervene in families all the time. We have thousands of children in foster care, because their parents are not providing adequate care, and sometimes we completely terminate them.
Before that, though, I mean, before that. With one child, I can understand that. But to have multiple children that fall into this, you know, and I know this is, you know, at the risk of being very controversial, but it's just, if we don't treat the underlying problem, you know, and I know it goes with education, food, good jobs and all that, you know, good-paying jobs, I think we're missing the boat, because we're winding up treating a symptom that we're going to treat over and over and over again, unless we get into that. And I think it's noble that we get in there and we feed the children, and we get them off to a good educational start, so that they can break that cycle. But I think we should put more responsibility or more emphasis on the responsibility. When that mother comes in, the single mother comes into a health clinic, and, you know, talk about the responsibility of raising that child. And I just hope we're all doing that in a manner that we get the results we want, so that we can, as Mr. McGovern said, work at ending hunger, instead of just perpetuating a situation over and over again. Any thoughts, Ms. Radcliffe? Dr. Radcliffe, I'm sorry.
Thank you. You know, the fact is that we do have poor children today, and so what my research shows is that focusing on those children and making sure they get what they need is going to help us into the future. And even if you have families that are working full-time, full-year at the minimum wage, even above the minimum wage, that they're going to be eligible for a program like SNAP. And when you talk to low-income families, a lot of what they say is they would like one good-paying job. So I think when we look at it, there are lots of complex issues that families are dealing with.
If I could really quickly just say, from my experience, my mom obviously didn't intend to be a single parent. My father left. She wasn't raised in a household where her parents encouraged her to get a skill set and an education. So these programs are essential to fill in the gap when she was getting that education to provide for us. So I think you're looking at a smaller subset there.
Well, my house got repossessed when I was 15, and there were six of us in the household. And, you know, I understand that plight, and it's something, again, it was the opportunity that we took advantage of, and I never wanted to repeat that for my children. I yield back.
Chair recognizes Ms. Plaskett for five minutes.
Thank you very much. Good, thank you, Madam Chair and the Ranking Member, and thank you so much for your testimony, for your thoughts and ideas in this. I had so much to say, or questions that I had to ask, but I was really taken by the last line of questioning and the discussion about symptoms and what the underlying symptoms are. Recognizing in my own life that so many of the friends that I grew up with are nowhere near have the success that life has given me, and so much of it had not to do with responsibility, but just sheer luck and being in the right place. Because everybody wanted to be responsible, and everybody wanted to have those opportunities, but they don't always come. They particularly don't always come in the areas that this country has completely forgotten about or have neglected, because they want to have policies that satisfy their own personal needs, but don't put food in children's stomachs. And so I think the symptom is us, not the irresponsibility of parents. But for those of us that have excess food, and food being in abundance in this country, that there are children who do not eat, who cares if their parents are not working? If children don't eat, that's an indictment on all of us. So, Dr. Haskins, I wanted to ask you a question. You talked about jobs and the responsibility, and I think that that's indeed very, very important for people to have jobs, not only to receive the funding, because having jobs make people feel like fulfilled individuals. And I think that most people want that feeling. I agree there are some who do not. But I think as a general whole, most Americans, most people throughout the world might require that. What do we do in the instances where we have a district or an area that has a 31% child poverty rate? And in some areas in that area, there's an 18% unemployment rate? How do you fulfill the need for people to have jobs in areas like that?
Well, there are several answers to that question. Historically, Americans have moved to different places if they can't find jobs.
And what if they're so poor that they cannot get a plane to get them off of the island where this is, places?
They have relatives. They have friends. There are many people who take advantage of that, and they borrow money. They're able to move if they're really determined to move, and especially if they have job experience.
So we just have a decimated place that no longer has the people living there, because there are no jobs there, and we don't want them to be on food stamps or school lunch programs. We'd rather they borrow money from family and leaves than take care of the situation there.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I haven't said anything about cutting food stamp benefits or anything like that. I'm, in fact, I am arguing that food stamps are a crucial part of what I call the work support system, and a lot of people work, because they can greatly, not just with their own wages, which are often low, but because they get these other benefits, up to around 30,000 or so, they can make their family better off, because of food stamps, Medicaid, childcare, and so forth. So the government programs that help them are essential. That's a main point in my testimony.
Mm-hmm. And then, aside from that, what are other ways that they could be able to, you know, and I know that some places have the waiver, but if the waiver is not available, what do we do then? For those people who are going to be for a sustained period of time on these programs?
Okay. One idea that has been tried in the past and has been, I would say, modestly successful, is that government hires people in jobs. Some people call them make-work jobs, but they don't have to be that way. They're used, in the old days, they were called community work experience jobs. And so they, in some places, they made a guarantee to people, said, "You're going to get a job. You go out and look. We're going to give you, say, two weeks or three weeks. If you can't find a job, we're going to give you a job, and you get paid the minimum wage for that job." So there'll be motivation to try to get out of the job.
Thank you.
But once you have income and earnings, then you can get these benefits in the work support system, and you'd be much better off.
Thank you. Thank you. And Dr. Radcliffe, it would be really important for us in this subcommittee and the committee as a whole to have a detailed reporting from you about the impediments that occur to families and to those children who have these food issues, particularly the economic, the long-term economic detriment to the individuals. I was really encouraged and interested in seeing the educational parameters and the impediments that happen to those educationally. Are there other areas, even their own relationships, the next generation, those things seem to me very important? Thank you.
All right, thank you. So it goes back to some of what Dr. Ochoa was saying. Some of the research that we find that looks at outcomes and childhood experience, we find that children who are poor in their earliest years, between birth and age two, that they are less likely to graduate from high school. And that's controlling for how long they're in poverty, parents' employment, other measures of family well-being. So it's really in these early years that can be particularly critical. And if we're looking to sort of identify children who are most at risk, those are children who are born to poor parents and poor, less educated parents, that they are, those children are particularly likely to be persistently poor and then have these worst academic outcomes.
The chair recognizes, not a problem, the chair recognizes Mr. Aguilar for five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and ranking member McGovern. Dr. Ochoa, I appreciate your statement where you referenced the fact that children who are living hungry may not experience those signs of food insecurity in the home. Children with asthma and allergies may demonstrate health-related issues and may not show signs of food insecurity. The screening process that you created to find children who are at risk of food insecurity is a great tool. And I wanted to know if you could expand on that for us? And do you believe that this is a model that can be used in other states, either on demonstration basis or I know through your association? Can you walk us through a little bit of that piece?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Aguilar. The Hunger Vital Sign, as I mentioned, we distilled from the 18-question USDA food insecurity screener, and we validated that in our Children's Health Watch sites. And so we actually are piloting it at our institution, at Arkansas Children's Hospital, with our resident trainees and their pediatric continuity clinics, where they see the same panel of patients over the course of their residency. And we have found in some preliminary data analyses that they're detecting food insecurity at a rate of about 23%, just like our research in our emergency department shows. So by advocating for the use of the Hunger Vital Sign, our academy, which represents well over 70,000 pediatricians across the country and hundreds of thousands of pediatric trainees, is advocating for its routine use. I do know that in the state of Oregon, the Medicaid program is looking at the Hunger Vital Sign as a performance measure. And I think that would be great to replicate in other state Medicaid programs as a tool for how effective we were addressing the social determinants of health. I wanted to mention also that, you know, the kids that we see in our clinics, the kids that I see in my clinics, are brought there by responsible parents who care for them. And they're bringing them to us to help. It would be a fantasy for me to try to treat some medical condition and completely ignore a hungry child or a hungry family. So that's why the Hunger Vital Sign is so important, because we're looking for other ways that we can support those families so that the health of their child is good, but the health of the household is even better. And it's our responsibility as pediatricians to figure that out.
And oftentimes, the individuals that are coming to you, they're going to have siblings who are going through, you know, similar issues. Ms. Riley talked about, you know, her family and her experiences. So if you can identify one child and screen them and offer these type of, this type of service and awareness, you know, you could be helping multiple members of the family at the same time. Can you talk, are there other examples? You mentioned Oregon. How difficult would it be to take it to scale? Is the use through Medicaid in a best practice type, you know, the best way to go about it, or what are other ways that we can look at?
Oh, I think it can absolutely be taken to scale. I mean, there are large health plans across the country like Kaiser. I know Kaiser is looking at the Hunger Vital Sign as well. But because Medicaid takes care of the majority of children in Arkansas, you know, from birth through age 18. And when we expanded Medicaid for our adult population, we also were able to have an impact on how we address social determinants for the low-income adult population. So I absolutely think that this can be taken to scale. Along with some of the other interventions that we mentioned in our report, like the partnerships with food pantries and, you know, trying to help with the SNAP application process, I think all those things working together can absolutely be taken to scale. There are hospitals across the country that have talked to us from Louisiana to Ohio about how we've done this. And I will say that a lot of what we've done, we've modeled after two large institutions in our network, Boston Medical Center and Hennepin County Medical Center in Minneapolis.
What's the reaction, again, Dr. Ochoa, what's the reaction of individuals and families after you bring information to their attention about SNAP resources?
It's a huge relief, you know? I mean, we have families that have successfully navigated the SNAP application process, but for those who don't, you know, we help them out in our clinic. And it's, even at some point, we engage our medical legal partnership on our campus to help them navigate the SNAP application process because we think it's so important. And, you know, there's nothing like the look on the face of a family when you send them home with a bag of food that can get them through the next two or three days until we can reconnect them to another food provider in their county or their city. It really takes that huge burden off the family, even if it's for two or three days.
And if you're raising awareness, you know, through these programs, you're offering them much more than something short-term, you're offering them a path forward as a family. Thank you so much. I yield back.
Well, I certainly want to say thank you to the panel and for coming in and sharing your expertise, giving us information that we can continue to look at the challenges that are faced ahead by kids and trying to break the cycle of poverty. And I would agree, you know, in the seven hearings that we have had, I do think that, you know, I can acknowledge anyway, no program's perfect and we can always do better. So I appreciate your contribution in making that happen today. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witness to any question posed by a member. This hearing for the Committee on Agricultural Nutrition Subcommittee is adjourned.